All right, we'll go ahead and call meeting to the floor. Seven oh one, yes. We all rise for the graduation.
United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, one home, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And can I have a motion to approve minutes from the last May twenty-third? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, school committee chair comments? I'm filling in for the chair tonight, I have no comments, so let's get over that. All right, next up, do we have any community comments to start the room? Do you have anybody raising their hand or any community comments online? No? Okay, I'll set for community talks. Girl, all right, student comments.
So I have two, I was going to do a regulation, I'm sorry, it's. Yeah, you shut up. Something at Delivers is just going small and small, but it's a question that we scored. But we had a seven month by Monday on fifteen twenty-two. Um, we will take these questions for highly important aspects for. The last week's school is on the energy.
Thank you very much for your update tonight. All right, move on to new business. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to bring us through our golden apple award recognition.
So he considers. Okay, I don't know that my eyesight is great enough to stand at the same heights as my whole guys. First of all, we want to thank everybody who took the time to submit an application. It was a very difficult selection process with many, many qualified candidates, names that were familiar and some names that were new. We very much enjoy the opportunity to hear about the exceptional work that's happening throughout our district and how our staff has touched the lives of so many in our community. It's our favorite part of doing these golden apples. Universally, any RSD staff is praised for their communication skills, their compassion, their flexible thinking, their creativity, and their dedication to moving our students forward in the wake of the national pandemic. We, the Mendenham Regional School Committee, extend our gratitude to staff in this district and are honored for this opportunity to recognize a special people. So with that said, our first recipient for the evening was recognized for her ability to take first graders whose kindergarten year, their first experience with education had been chaotic, and to show them that learning can be stable, safe, and most of all, fun. This individual was described as patient, flexible, and creative in her connections with her students. Not only did this person take the time to understand her students' interests in order to connect and earn their trust, but she truly understood their learning profiles and invested her time and energy in defining strategies to maximize their engagement. One parent perfectly summed up why this staff member was nominated by stating she is well able to balance accountability with encouragement and growth, which is truly admirable. It is my great pleasure to present the first golden apple tonight, Memorial School Paraprofessional, Molly Smith.
Over here.
In front of the pretty screen.
You don't have your RSD background, right? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I want to. This is amazing. Here, kind of as a. So with. College education being a guard is best way to become a teacher, candidate.
For the last several years, in the wake of the national pandemic in particular, our district has chosen to invest additional time and resources in the supporting of social emotional development in our students. Is with this in mind that I introduce our second recipient. This individual is recognized for her compassion and her ability to empathize with students during a very delicate and complicated time in their development. The staff members' professionalism and swift response to concerns were recognized along with her open communication with families. In addition to her social emotional support of students and families, this person was appreciated for her effort to help students prepare for transitions necessary in their life after middle school. In the words of one of our families, I can't say enough how lucky the students and parents are in having a person like this in the guidance counselor position at this school. It is my privilege to present the second Golden Apple Award tonight, Nisco School Counselor Kathleen Allen. Yes, thank you very much. Chair?
No, it's all right.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I really appreciate this honor. Molly, I don't have as much to say as you do. But I want to thank everybody, not only am I a professional in this district, but I'm very honored to be a parent and it's been a wonderful ride on both. Appreciate it. And last but not least, our final recipient tonight was nominated for his dedication to NIMAC High School and students' learning differences. In his role as a special educator, one parent noted that he does not just teach, he goes above and beyond imparting knowledge and a piece of his spirit and genuine character to students. The positive teaching style and strategies to be successful in the real world in his guidance has not only made an incredible impact on our students' education, but on his growth and development as well. Additionally, it was stated that this individual empowers his students to be consistent, enhancing their ability to increase his or her personal growth. He takes the time to create custom lesson plans for each student while also creating a team culture that builds trust, respect, and unlocks their potential. In addition to his teaching role, this individual serves as a track and field coach where it was noted that he has the ability to coach his students on how to set goals and to achieve them, to give direct feedback that reinforces key messages, to focus on a desired outcome rather than a persistent problem, to see the best in others, and to build self-esteem. It's an honor to present our final Golden Apple Award at the evening to NIMAC High School Special Educator, Coach Justin Hamilton.
You have no options.
Can we put any more words?
I'm just getting my blocks over to you. Thank you.
There you go, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I feel I'll pay a holding because I also teach.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you, everybody. Just moving on, Dr. Cullen, superintendent with shared comments.
All right, and as much as I know you all want to stay for the meeting and your findings I'm going to share later, this might be a good time for you to, you know, head on out if you have other things to do. And but what I'd like to say before everyone goes is just. I should have said this first. This is, we had an amazing list of educators and counselors and paraprofessionals and all sorts in our district who make a difference every day. And you are the cream of the crop for sure, the three of you, and I'm just so excited to work with you and to go in and see you in action in meetings and meeting. I saw Kathleen in a little bit of crisis and I was like, thank goodness for Kathleen in this crisis. And I go in Molly's class and I don't want to leave. And I follow your Twitter reports of Justin so much of like track and field that I feel like I'm on on the field with you and the sports you do out there and also in the classroom throughout the year. So I see it every day and not everyone's able to see what all of you do every day. So just thank you for that and have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
I love you so much. Thank you.
Kudos to our child, Ariane, and everyone and all the behind the scenes work that went into presentation. It was, we lucked out on the most perfect day for weather and it was just an exceptional night, exceptional day and experience for everyone in the graduates, everyone was so happy, stayed after, we took, saw lots of pictures being taken, sharing that I love getting ways. The end of our mission, but it really, really is a culmination of what we do in the district and it was exceptional. It's now online and you can see it on YouTube if you choose to watch. So just wanted to highlight that. So my first, so two main items in my district update tonight remain first. So I'm thrilled to put forward recommendations to remove the interim from Cheryl's title of Assistant Superintendent for next year. So in addition to her experience in human resources, data analysis, leadership coaching, and her being a true fit instructor for me every day, I would recommend her without any hesitation to continue as our Assistant Superintendent moving forward. I'm just bringing you back to our original search that we did for the interim Assistant Superintendent back. So she came aboard towards the end of, middle, end of October. And we had more than twenty applicants who moved through the whole interview process at that time. For those that don't know, she has twenty-five years of experience in Boston, Baltimore, Chelmsford, with a master's degree in teaching and administration, a doctor from the Harvard Graduate School of Education. She's been director of personnel and fashion and running for five years, five of the coming year. And she is one of the most incredible leaders I know and people I know. And she makes me better every single day. I can't reiterate enough. Even in less than one year, how she's taken on additional responsibilities such as oversight and support of our human resource department and changes we've had there. Public records management, which is something that we really didn't have before or need before, and that can be a full-time job sometimes with public records. Other hats, Title IX Investigations and Support around, we have bullying and prevention updates we had at the beginning of the year. That was our first on the on the roll, I handed that over to her and she's able to get that through with fine colors. Also, other parts of her role, supervising ELO programming, just leading the higher ELO teacher, mentor induction, all the stuff that I did before, it's like line rant writing. We've heard about hundreds of thousands of dollars of branches that are being brought in this year. And as well as leading our equity, diversity, inclusion team, our PD committee. I'm sure I'm missing about ten other items, but she really has moved our district forward in a short amount of time. We have spent the last couple of weeks working on the contract language, I'm sure that with you, having to do for a night long and approved by him, language cases too. So what I'm asking for, this is one of the rules where I come forward with a recommendation and then it's a like the approval of that recommendation.
Any questions? Motion?
The interim from Cheryl's title to a point here as Assistant Superintendent. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, congratulations.
So I thought that I might hopefully be able to say something today and I'm thrilled that, you know, this is maybe the home that I kind of knew it was on my first year. I described to somebody when I started here that I felt like professionally I was coming home in the sense of like, I got into this work because I love teaching and I love students. And it's refreshing to be able to work with teachers and students again. But I had a path that has been a little bit traversing where I've done some work in HR and I've done some work in data analytics. And I know that all of that will help me in this role. And the passion that I have for doing the work every day was realized real soon. So for me, I knew I wanted to stay, but I also came to realize that even more with the folks that I work with. The team that you all have here in Minnetonka is incredible. And I say that as somebody who has worked in several places. So I, you should be proud of the quality of the work that's going on here, the administration, the leadership that happens, the teaching that happens. My first day here, I remember going into a school and saying, is it okay if I go into these classrooms or they're immediately down? The answer was, no, of course they'll be fine. And that has been my experience since day one and that is not common. And just today, when we were in a session, I had a moment where I was just like, gosh, it's happening again. And the teachers are sitting around the table talking about co-teaching and they're at once saying, I need help with this. And also saying, no, 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 you've got that wrong. It's this way. And they can have those conversations around the table where they'll learn how to become better in their practice and do what it's all about and there's no barriers to that. So I'm looking forward to working with you. I'm appreciative of your faith in me and looking forward to the next few years of working together.
Thank you.
So one of the big items, items to present tonight are the, my entry plan report. And the approach that I'd like to take, I shared out the preliminary report with all of you. For those at home who are watching, it's about twenty pages long. It is preliminary and I mean that because I want to present it tonight, I want you to have time to read through it. And then my goal would be, I'll spice it up a little bit, make it publishable by the fall, you know, through the summer and then have it be a document that people coming forward can read through and have any additional edits or additional information added into it. But basically, when I brought forward, I think it was in August, what my plan was for the entry plan, I'm going to just talk through the presentation in Chris, if you could put it up on the screen when we get an opportunity. I'm going to just give a quick overview of what I intended to do. And then I'm going to jump into some of my findings. I'm not going to go through every single one. It's a lot of text in here, so I'll just pull some out. And then I'm going to talk about some of the future action steps, next steps that will lead into our strategic planning. All set? Go to the next slide. So the purpose of an entry plan is to really gather information through a systematic approach. A lot of the information I'm going to share this evening has to do with high level findings. Not, you know, one person being and said one thing to me. It's themes that I got through observations, what I could see, what I could tell, what I could hear, a whole different course of view entire year. And so what I also wanted this to serve was the fact that even though I've been here prior eight years, and this is my ninth year in the district, that I'm really looking through it in a different lens from a superintendent's lens. I was exposed to different areas that I wasn't necessarily involved in. And I also wanted people to get to know me, so when I go to meetings, it was a lot of listening, just like a listening tour of sorts and observing, asking questions, and trying to discover what are some of the themes that people want me to hear at the level of interim superintendent. Next slide. So I, this was my, these were my goals at the beginning of the year, so I broke it up into looking at student experience as well as school community engagement, communication, organizational capacity, strategic vision, and goals. Now in retrospect, now that I'm at the end of the year, maybe I would have organized these categories slightly differently, but I kept with the categories and just fit in some of my findings underneath there. Next slide. So the entry plan phases, a lot of the listening and learning, and you try to estimate how long that might take. And one thing to really explain, this isn't really something that ends. Even today, someone will come in my office, they'll share something great, a highlight, they'll share something that we need to work on. And either way, that goes into the bank of, okay, what theme am I hearing and what are some changes we might need to make in the future? Is this a strategic form of future and, you know, how does this fit into the overall picture? So it really is ongoing, but tried to focus on it and then started to bring in, probably in the winter to spring, I started to group some of the general see here counts, I got findings, and then put together this draft before at the end of this year. Next slide. So methods of the see here count data collection. I had numerous entry meetings, so with all of the school community members, the district leadership teams, association leadership, district teachers, staff, students, some community members, parents, administrators, kind of like what's a order selection. So basically, I would ask and I'll show you the questions, just so we can see what some of the standard questions were. So I'd ask standard questions and then try to gather some general themes. I also attended as many school-based meetings as I could and also had any of the school-based surveys or also any district surveys that went out and use that as feedback. So when I started to put together the report, I was looking at all of those various surveys. So for example, one was a Nisco Communication Survey that went to parents, one was a Memorial Communication Survey that went to parents, et cetera. So I would go through all of those and see what I had done as well. I also, even though I'm no longer leading, Cheryl's leading a lot of the district meetings, like the PD committee, the EBI committee as an example. I periodically will attend different district meetings or faculty meetings or department meetings when they come on, so I can just hear what the conversations are. So a good example, today we had co-teaching training, I came over here for about forty-five minutes just to observe and see, you know, what, what was going on, so I could listen in here and observe. Observations, so one thing that I actually think I'd like to continue, it's called a school-based residency. So in the first couple of months, I spent a full day in each school. So it's in a way, it's almost like a shadow of principal day. But I also, you know, I'd attend meetings with them if they're on lunch duty and it's a lunch duty. Anything that was going on in their day, I was part of it, I mean, I was with students, just to have a sense of the overall function of the school. I'm in schools every week, but it's different to be in a school from the beginning of the school day all the way through to the end of the school day. In the past, we also have always sensed the shadow of student and we'll start bringing that back, that's usually in February, March, where we, you know, shadow a student at different grade level and I intend for that back next year. But this was really helpful just from a leadership perspective and organizational perspective. Something we also brought in, I know I'd already talked about it, but just to remind you, we had brought in learning walks in each of the schools with our leadership team where we looked and did learning walks and worked against the protocols. We hadn't done that before. Classroom walkthroughs, now I didn't actually count exactly, I approximated how many schools I had, for how long, approximately how many weeks. And I think it's over four hundred classroom visits that I probably did in the school year, if I'm adding, let's say, five or so. But I go to each school, I try to get into each school every single week at least once, I schedule one-on-one walkthroughs or annual meetings with principals, but there are additional events sometimes in there as well. I also attend as many of the school events that I can, sometimes like this week, I might have to choose between three events that they come the same night. But, you know, I try to make sure I'm mixing that up. And then finally, the document review, probably not as exciting, but you have the looking at our curriculum, our programming, student data, my annual data operations policies. There's still more honestly that I need to look through this summer and next year too and continue to become familiar with all of our documentation. And sometimes I'll reference something, I'm like, okay, I have to look into that, something I haven't, but I spend some time in the document as well. So if you go to the next slide, thank you. So here we have the feedback questions that I would ask in my interviews with people. And also I put this out to staff as well, if anyone wanted to add to the entry process. But I'm always trying to hear what people identify as the school system's greatest strengths, our community's greatest strength, any significant challenges facing our school district, any solution people recommend that we might not have followed so far, what people are proud of, what you want to protect and maintain. And that question is something that is almost more helpful even when you're going into a new district and you're trying to learn cultures. There weren't a lot of surprises in some of the answers here, but some things of course did rise to the top. And as we think about schools in the next five years, what can our goals and vision be in the future? We'll spend a lot more time on this next year as we start to build out our strategic plan for the future. I asked our students and faculty and different people, how are we meeting the needs of our students, are they thriving? So I'll speak to that a little bit. And also, I found some of the reports from the superintendent survey helpful. Vicki, I think I shared that with me, so the next one. Becky, I think I shared that with me. So the next one, what do you feel the needs, the superintendent needs to address immediately? There were themes that I heard just in general, but. And then finally, because it's something I already knew was work that we wanted to work on is how do we strengthen our partnerships with members of our community? So that's something that I would ask people as well. So what I'm going to do is provide in the next slide, start to begin in the different categories to share findings. So Chris, if you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, so on the left, I'm gonna give some highlights of some findings and then I'll jump into a couple of next steps and that'll be the process that I take with this. Uh, so what, I already, I already knew this, but it was nice to hear in people's statements that are strict because it's our goal, our goal to have it be like this. But our strategic vision and goals are living, breathing document and that's meant enough to regional school districts. I would say that all the faculty members are very aware of what it is, there are a lot of references to it. I would say the one area with this current um plan, as opposed to the last one. I I don't know as many parents sometimes, though, they know some pieces of it. I think we could communicate a little more clearly with parents. Uh, but it is living and breathing part of the board that you see in schools. A language in the plan comes to life through commitment to student agency, forceful learning environments and authentic learning experiences. Uh, we have a a portion of our strategic plan now, I'm mentioning it because it is my favorite part of the plan, our our innovative elements. Uh, but I love that we're we're now in year four and people reference and incorporate student agency. This apart right here, uh, as part of our culture, which wasn't as much of our culture four years ago. So I've seen that growth of student voice and action taking place. We've already talked about authentic market experiences late eight as well. In a couple of years, we focused on a lot of flexible learning environments and you've seen that through observations and that's what's. Um, members of the community view the district vision as aspirational, a lot of comments about that. Also that we're focused on innovation, continuous improvement. So I'm proud of that work. Some future action steps in this area, if you go to the next part, thank you. So further implementation of support of our learning competencies need to happen within critical instruction into really re-operationalize. Uh, we have I can state drafts, that was part of our action steps for this year. And we found that we still need work for to be kind of living and breathing in across the whole district. Um, we also, what came up in some comments from parents here and there was uh comments related to unfinished goals from the previous strategic plan. So one area that has come up a lot relates to world languages. And I'm sure you've heard it, related to funding and world languages. We did, we have from that original plan before, we have expanded world language at middle school from where it was previously. But it hasn't reached the point that was our original goal. So some of the conversations that have come up with us, you know, that's where I should commercialize it more and other places too, is how do we expand world language across the whole district? And so I want to keep that as another heading into the next strategic. Next. Student experience and social emotional learning. So social emotional learning competencies and wellbeing survey, we um, we set that out for second year, we sent that in a survey. And it brought positive results in areas of supportive relationships, self-management, positive emotions. I have all the data embedded in the findings, so I'm not gonna go in depth with everything here or we'll be here all night. But um, so that, what really stood out to me was that supportive relationships. And when you hear even what the comments are that people talked about who were nominated for Golden Apple Award. Or when I talked to students and it wasn't, I was in focus group with students, supportive relationships with staff is a number one thing that comes up. And is very evident. Areas for growth that had a little bit lower numbers related to students' emotional regulation, self-efficacy. And feeling of how you manage having challenging parents. So what do we do with some of that? We take that data, we track it over the years. And then we embed some of those cases where our students in general, we look at it from a student level, but we also look at it at a school district level. In our SCL curriculum and making sure that we have that support. And then finally, on the left here, students indicate that when I ask them, hey, you know, whatever strengths, et cetera, makes them feel prepared for college. Your supportive relationships with teachers and that every student has an opportunity to learn, there are lots of opportunities to students. So this is coming from our high school students. So future action steps. One thing that came up pretty clearly when we were talking about Metro West health data and also in a few other conversations as well. We need a health curriculum at that high school. We currently have physical education classes, but we do not have health classes at the high school. And when we know the areas in Metro West or some areas, the place that you would address some of those areas that we we need to work on with our students would fall in the health curriculum. But we don't have an avenue we need to be, we have some advisory lessons, but to have advisory lessons over the full year, that would be the core health curriculum. We also talked about this at with addition of wellness teacher in the whole school, which is one case why we're having to have another wellness teacher. Is that students were getting such little excellent health curriculum from a teacher we have, but not a, not enough frequency. And so uh, this is something that is top of mind in critical work on this. Additionally, um, we talked about some, members have talked about this, providing updated trauma informed PD. We did, we did provide it a few years ago and we had a couple rounds of trauma informed PD. But we haven't had it in the last year. And so there's a need to kind of come back to that and um, okay, you did, you done, we did like a mental health too. Like the first aid course, we did that a few weeks ago, so now we have to come cycle back. So I think it's important that some of these um types of PD that we're rotating through to make sure that if we have staff members, et cetera, that we go to them with that. We plan to continue our annual survey of SCL wellbeing, as I mentioned, to track progress and to further develop resources that we need in this area. And one thing to note, there's a thousand items I can be talking about related to entry plan, findings. What I tried to highlight tonight were areas that I haven't talked about so far this year. So we've talked a lot of strategic planning, but I wanted to bring in other information that we maybe haven't presented on this. So student experience, something else that came up, for the first time, we had through the interim equity and inclusion survey. And this was part of our EDI work of having equity on it, just to get a sense of how students are feeling. Are they feeling safe and supported? Are they feeling like they belong or are they included? Um, you know, what do they want to talk about? So um, part of that and also looking at, we've looked at um data just about their academics and subgroups too. Just to get a sense that all students are are feeling included and safe and supported. So in this survey, eighty-four, I only pulled out a couple of things, but eighty-four percent think adults treat students of different cultures fairly. We, the survey also indicated there's a need to help support students to learn and talk with each other about other cultures. In this area for growth, favorable responses for these questions were in the thirty-four to forty-four percent range. And in the future, if we want to dive deeper into some of this, we can present that out on the EDI committee in the next year. But from the sense of some of the comments, there was a lot of, oh, we're everything safe, we're good, everything's good. You had a group of student responses, this is when I was reading their responses, yeah, it's good. And then you had students saying, you know, a few saying like, well, I don't know, I don't really ever really talk about other cultures. Or like, oh, I probably have it in one class or, no, I don't really know, I probably learned more, or what do I need to? Like it was this mixture. There definitely was a sense when a book quantitative qualitative that there's more work to be done. Especially if uh competency for us um in portrait of honor is around local citizenship and understanding uh all people from alternate cultures and languages, et cetera. That this is important work to keep talking to students about. Um, middle school and high school students in focus groups that express interest in improving equity and inclusion. So when you go and talk to students as opposed to the survey response, when you talk to students, there are many students who are really eager to have these conversations. In particular, we have students at the middle and high school who are working on handbook and dress code provisions, they're gonna come forward. Before next year, probably in in August, um, is when they'll come forward, but they're looking through the handbook. You know, it's happened a really relaxed in a long time, so it's pretty outdated in language. And some of uh just day-to-day confused students, they're looking through the history plans. Um, students are also asking for using one piece of language, but only these two students that came on a number of times. Um, future action steps. Work with students on equity and inclusion issues that have been identified with the handbook and dress code provisions and increasing inclusive practices in schools. Also expand the work of the EDI committee, including more students. I would say our students who are on it are amazing. I'd love to see even more students involved. Uh, because they bring such a unique perspective of what it's like to be in schools and the work that really matters for them as well. Uh, but Cheryl's been leading that committee this year and we've made some great progress. Moving forward, we have some outcomes that with our last meeting we lost today. So full communications. I won't belabor this because we've talked a lot about communication, but it was nice to see that weekly emails, newsletters and updates were well received by families. And lots of feedback saying that people in those surveys from um the very school that they are really appreciative of newsletters that are coming out on a frequent basis. The expansion of social media outlets allowed for new avenues for sharing information or crossposting the same information. So it doesn't take a lot of effort to just post events, et cetera, and have it be shared out. Um, we are continuing the branding of our school and district logos as part of our Mendenham identity aid and communication and marketing. Um, one area, the Native American imagery will not be incorporated into any new clothing or logo creation, something you may have noted. You know, so we have the Mendenham logo, we have the Nipmaw logo, so we used to have imagery in the background, just going with the standard, you know, Ed for Nipmaw. And then this logo this year has standard using standard font as well for the school hills. And so the next phase that I mentioned, the findings, we're just looking at popping memorial and looking at standard colors, standard communication and connecting it all to Mendenham. So we always want to foster the school identity, identities that are taking place, but we also want to build that Mendenham identity. So one thing we're gonna try to do is have more, or have more, we would have been here. Um, and start to have, you know, so I could have a jacket and purchase a jacket, just like we buy Nipmaw for Misto and be able to have the art for Mendenham as well. And just trying to in improve that branding piece for the whole district. And that will, that also goes in line with all of our communications that go along with it too. Uh, something that's been mentioned already, we had a lot of communication surveys in the news this year. And so the plan, as I stated with my goals and the strategic plan, was to develop that communication kind of outline for frequency and expectations next year. So the goal is to have that started to be something that we have in the past year. We've already started that work at some of the meetings, but we'll have a written document for that. So future action steps, which I probably shared some of it there. Um, one, we've been increasing our communications. Some districts hire communication directors, right? List off all the towns around us that have that, right? It's also the Mendenham for us. We're not necessarily in a position to hire full-time communication directors, I'm not advocating for that. But one thing that small districts like us do is they hire with an educational PR firm and as consultants and they're different packages. And so what we're wanting to do next year is pilot this package of consulting where they provide us like four press releases each month. And so any of our highlights, we send it to them, they can send it out and they will then reach out to all news outlets. That's something that we don't have time to do, is reach out and work with the news outlets. That's something that they do. And so imagine additionally, any of the big events that happen, you know, send out a letter and and tell you, you know, kind of what our perspective on a crisis that's happening here or something that's happening locally. They also help with those communications. And they also, if, you know, if we ever had a major crisis, they stage the crisis um and manage the crisis with news. So in places where you have a really big, I don't even want to name something, but things that happen, they show up, they manage the news and the staging. And so we can manage the crisis, they help with the communications. And they bring that whole team that helps in districts. And so we're trying them out and uh, a lot of districts use them and we're gonna see how that is. And hopefully we'll see kind of any free cycles to keep expanding our publications about all the highlights and so people get insight into what's happening in the district. Uh, another future action step is to de- develop common expectations for teacher classroom communications, particularly around grades and feedback. So some of the input that was coming back from parents at the couple of schools that did the communication surveys, there was lack of clarity. They they liked the school communications, but it was inconsistent on the teacher level of someone say, well, I don't know what the grade level expectations are. Or, oh, there is a mobile policy or then there's some questions, we found that we need to just keep working. It's hard to do, we keep working on a consistent state of communication, keeping that from a uh teacher level, classroom level. And so uh, that's the work that I know they've started at this so and we'll take a look at this year. Already talked about the logos and the communication plan. So finance and operations, I think most of this we weren't talked about, but just to highlight. Oh, I heard a lot, especially in the beginning of the year, coming out of the budget crisis from last summer. Um, that people wanted more transparency in the process. So a lot of our work was to provide more clarity in the process with departmental presentations. Where I go to the budget book, website information, we're still gonna continue to improve that. I'll talk about some of the things we need to do. But I do feel like we've made great strides this year and I receive positive feedback towards the end of these actual budget presentations. Long-term planning is the next step, beginning with capital planning and Jay's gonna give you some highlights of the preliminary list. Uh, but also trying to start more long-term planning of financial projections out beyond just a year. And there's a strong desire from community respondents to address athletic fields, um, as well as the need for a turf and a track. And as well as the effectiveness of building improvements. So I recently met with a forming turf committee, review committee of members. And I'll bring them forward at a future meeting where they're gonna talk about some of the work and research that they've done. The original um committee began that work in two thousand fifteen. Seems like yesterday we were talking about it and then over the years, I mean, it's almost seven years ago. And so they're gonna give some updates to some of the needs from that point now and and what it is like to advocate for in the future. That was the number one facilities in athletic fields, going back to our new the classroom survey that I sent out to the community. All uh facilities and athletics is the number one need and our respondents were spending. Future action steps, talked about capital planning. Also, we plan to continue to increase the use of visual displays of national data. Uh, we are in a pilot group with an organization that is working in school districts, just starting off this year. So we got on the ground level with them on how to uh displace data, maybe with data, I don't know, some of the data, I can't even remember what you're talking about. Uh, but all of the data you want to see related to budget, we give it to them, create the visual displays, compare it against districts. So they will work with us, we're in this pilot group to basically help design some of that. So we're excited about that. But we just are just giving them some of our data now, because we're setting up some new digital work. Um, I'm going to continue to partner with new groups such as We Care, this is not a meeting, that recently worked lobby project. Like in this bill and also with the turf field committee that's um been forming. And another area, I gave a whole list in the findings related to changes that need to be made in human resources. I'm not going to pull this now, we've addressed a lot this year, but that has been an area where had a lot of findings, because it wasn't an area I was involved in before. And we realized this with the transfer of personnel and kind of looking through everything in the entry plan that there's a lot of areas for improvement and efficiencies and also consistencies. We've already made some changes and Laurie Cuddy's been great with that, but a lot of things are going digital uh soon, so less paper, hopefully. In regard to organizational capacity around teaching and learning, and we've talked a lot about this throughout the year, obviously it'll be hard to highlight a lot related to teaching and learning. Um, so just to bring us back, some of our strengths are the high quality instructional assessment resources that we talk about all the time. We've had exceptional PD and I-ready data cycles, having implemented with challenge leadership. Really excited about the rollout next year of the RDC have gotten updated and we've begun a lot of important. Really excited about the rollout next year of the R D cap, that's been updated, and we've begun a lot of important curriculum work in the middle school this year. So those are some of the highlights. In the findings, I gave more details related to accountability data. And I didn't dive into like a thirty-page, you know, outline of all of our accountability data, you can get that on the website. But I wanted to pull out some of the areas that I wanted to note that we are working on. So student accountability, now this goes back to the previous year, so this is last spring. And our students are taking impact right, right now, or just yet. So it indicated that we had moderate growth in E L A and math in recent, and we had low growth in E L A, math, and British language data. Some of the subgroup data that's jumping out to me is around our English language learners. Definitely there's an achievement gap with that, as well as many of our students who are on I T. And one area that we're focusing on is what are some of the needs for that, and what are some areas that we focus on to have some sort of improvement. I added in today on the bottom, I did put it in the findings, but as of the memo from Memorial, she has good looking AI ready data. And it indicated, according to one day, and from now on, that reading growth was showing about hundred twenty-two percent. Growth in eighty-two percent of the students were at grade level, or about math was about one nine percent. The students were eighty percent. We, she started her assessment a little bit earlier than some of the other schools, so there's a window of time, so she was there almost done, so we kind of have that from those data. But then others are. So future action steps. So we already talked about how we're going to communicate our new D cap and implement that in all state leaders. One area I don't mention left, but we put a pause on our curriculum review cycle that I started just prior to the year. The first year about was in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the second year nineteen twenty. So we had a couple of rounds of curriculum review, we had long term review and social study. And then we started E L A in that nineteen twenty year in the COVID hit. And so then we had to pause our E L A curriculum review. So now that we're trying to get back into a regular cycle of that, what we need to do is to start off our general district curriculum review. And there are a couple of areas that have already been identified, but we've been continuing work, Cheryl's meeting, and Joey's curriculum review in the summer, I mean, in the spring. So far, and some areas that they've noted based off of some of the data from I writing and also M pass data from last year. There are some areas that they will need to focus on, particularly around the professional text is one of the areas for growth, and so they'll be working on how they can grow for that this year. Also noted that we had the original and separate where I ready personalized instruction week. And we've seen an increase in use at the middle school since then, but we want to target and increase use of that I ready continuous instruction platform. As that's another supplemental resource, just that we lose that to another side, I think, and we need to make more of a target. To address some of the achievement gaps related to our students with special needs. One area is co-teaching and inclusion training teachers that started today. So our new co-teaching teams that we have assigned for each year have the original training, and then we continue to guide and consult the next year. And so that will bring them all up to speed, get a turnover in different teachers in the last couple of years where we have been trained. And so we're excited about that. I also already mentioned that the need for these will bring our opportunities pay for me. And so some ideas have come up in some of our meetings this year. I think some of it is moving to the long term, and it might take finances to support it. But there are also things that we can do now that don't involve additional staff, that we can try to start doing. Right, this is the last one. I'm going to leave it hanging out. I don't, I don't want to speak there all night either. So organizational capacity around special education technology. Something that came up right at the start of the school year were questions about transition between schools. And the need, that was feedback from parents, that there was confusion about programming, looked differently at various schools. And maybe we could provide more details on the website of what the programs are and to help inform parents. So we did that right away with the website and also had transition nights, and we should make that our theme of the spring, as well to help with the transitions next year. So we've seen some improvement there. We also increased communications at the now in special ed, through recording newsletters and workshops that we haven't ever had before. We had a technology planning committee. I know you haven't seen the full text, the plan hasn't presented formally. I asked Dee and Joe to supervise, and they gave me some highlights of some findings. So I share more in the report we hear a couple of years. One, the committee identified a need for formal district-wide K to twelve digital citizenship program. We have talked about it in tech classes and other places, but we don't have a vertical alignment to everything, all aspects of digital citizenship. We also have different staff, newer staff in some of our technology. Do new technology instructors in the district. And so going back to that K to twelve, we need for vertical alignment, we do, because I don't have a technical community to do much, but in over the years, we can stop. In regard, this is more budgetary, and we talked about it in a bunch of presentations, but always kind of need to put it out there. Much of our projectors, interactive smart board types of plays are approaching them. So we try to keep them as long as we can and keep going, but some of them are approaching that. A lot of those purchases were made with one time funds, if they're not one time. Also, we always maximize grant funding as much as we can to the fact that technology can save our students, which all know that. But one area, it's a lot of price cuts as well, we have a few peers, but we do need to create a financial component in our budget, our population, our system. And so we always put that on radar. Future action steps, something that came up out of our programmatic review from the group this year, was a need for additional training for our A D S. In particular, this year, staffing in general has been a challenge in all schools. And this year, where we have staff on the board, we have staff meeting. There's a need for ongoing training. It hasn't been where we have staff staying through in some positions. So there's a need for more training on staff, so we'll work on that. And also related to our start programming in special ed. Identified need for refinement of exit criteria for our A D supported program. We've already heard in the past presentations about computer science programming, being created a high school to develop that pathway. But this also came up, the technique, I need to really build on those skills. The last future actions up there. Chris is going to click through all of my pictures that I pulled out, not all, but from our newsletters and posts this year. I know I just threw a lot of words at you and have a lot to talk about, of course, in the district. But I always try to come back to the idea that it's about the student experience. It's, do they love coming to this school? Do they feel safe? Are we holding high expectations? Are they engaged in their learning? Are we in a continuous improvement cycle? And, you know, all culminating with, you know, graduation at the end of their years with us. And so the entry plan only captures some of the information that could benefit the document, I know you want that. But hopefully it provides you and also members of the community with some things that are kind of on the radar, some things we've learned, some things to highlight. And that we're always looking to, to learn and grow. So with that. Any questions, comments? And if you want more time later to, you know, give some feedback or thoughts and before we make it, I'll publish document on the website.
I mean, I think there's a ton of good stuff there, and I just, but I wonder how that kind of translates to like in terms of action steps. That at the beginning of the year, we kind of identify like the goals for the year and then like get more granular from there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So there, we probably, it's a two-pronged approach, so we're still, one, heading into our fifth year of our strategic plan. So there are some cases we've already identified and I didn't talk about, you know, so a few of the items there. We already have a good sense of some areas that we didn't get to this year that we need to work on. And that that was part of our district action steps that we're working on this summer. And then come forward and present in the fall, what areas are our district action steps for this year. So that's sort of like heading into next year. It doesn't mean, I mean, some of these are technical issues, so we're still going to digitize something that's not the strategic plan, or digitize some of our operations. You know, bring in a few support. Then there's the second prong of more long-term planning. So because next year is our last year of the strategic plan, our strategic planning committee for the next year commences next year. So. I ran one of these when I was district, probably, you know, could, you could do it over the course of almost a whole year. You want to do just one meeting a month, that's like two hours a month, or do you condense it and start it, you know, a little bit easier? And then have it, you want to basically have it finalized before you enter into that next year, so you end up watching it and planning your P D and that sets like a bottom year. So what I would do with this, one piece, one purpose of an entry plan, so let's imagine I'm a new superintendent that happened in this district. I would do an entry plan that was a little bit shorter in time, like I would have, I mean, July one, I would have presented this maybe a month ago. And then we could kick off, that would be a springboard for what we're going to go forward and next year we can have a strategic. But we already have, if you have a strategic plan, then we do that. So I'm going to use this data and findings and present it in that fall when we, if it's one of the examples we have. And then when we do, for those of you who were involved in the strategic planning process last time, one of the aspects that we look at is, is they will do that in surveys. And we'll send surveys out from what we were looking for in future plans. Look at our student data and all the different, you know, data that I share as well, to have more people pull out their findings. I don't foresee, just as a theory, that some aspects of our more comprehensive plan, like with innovative elements and our mission statement. I mean, maybe people say when we do it, we want to have a whole mission statement, you know, or some of those aspects. Or the group, like when I led a group for another district, they said, no, we still like that, we still like our vision, that's still adequate. But it's really impressive that we want to update it, so they're really well designed.
So as you cover here, I was here five years ago, who exactly thinks up this through the future action plan? Who is that, just the, was this school community or is there broader?
That's a great, a great question. So we, I would imagine we would take this similar approach we did before. So I think, I think it was a room filled like this, probably max twenty-five or thirty people. We wanted stakeholders, so all school community members were included, and they wanted to participate, we had the whole leadership team. We had teachers and you would put it out to all the teachers and staff who wants to be on more representation across the groups. And then we put it out to community members and have key community members. And you usually have like an application, not an application, but they fill out a form, interest why they want to do it, what they bring to the table. And then you want to make sure that not having all elementary, all high school, and then have a mixture there. So then that's kind of the core group that does a lot of that strategy and the review. The leadership team did the final kind of writing piece, and we hired a consultant last time that led us through the work. So if that's something we have to decide, we want to hire someone outside, or since we've done it now twice, I've led one, you know, we do have a structure to play with, we choose to do it ourselves. So we can figure that out later. But we also want as much info as possible, so we did that through the surveys, did a community one where we're looking for. We also would have focus groups, so we would have some meetings with, and so the consultants did that, where you have focus groups with students, teachers, almost like you're getting away from the student search. And so you ask some questions, feedback, and then that's share the group as well. A lot of work, but it's fun. I really like it, I really like it, so. Questions? Last, I'll invite Jay to overview this one here, now this.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so you shared a capitalist that we actually had put together probably seven or eight years ago. We updated it in two thousand eighteen, and the pandemic fell off the radar for a while. So we updated it recently again. There was two tabs. One is the stuff that we've completed. Those things are basically because something broke. That was why a lot of those things got done, you know, and air fishing, it stopped working in the auditorium. It had to upgrade, you know, we had to replace it. So we've invested, you know, about one point nine million dollars into the facilities over the last probably ten years. Through operational funds, through the use of grant money, you know, for example, security cameras in the building to do state grants. It's a variety of things. So just let me back up for two cents so you understand the facility. We have four facilities. This building opened in nineteen ninety-seven, brand new. At the same project, Misco Hill was completely renovated. So they, you know, we did, they replaced floors, carpeting, all that kind of stuff, furniture, that was all part of one project. Buckland Memorial opened around two thousand three and two thousand four. And they were brand new as well. So all of our facilities are basically twenty-five years old at this point. They'll make your schools a little bit newer, but there's things that are now starting to be upgrades. So if you go onto the other tab, which I had anticipated in progress, there's a lot of things listed there, and I'm not going to read through them all. I'm sure that you have enough authority to look at a lot of them. They really focus around the infrastructures of the facility, things like carpeting, things like HVAC systems, air conditioning units. Some of the exterior stuff, staircases at this building, the stage floor of Misco. There's a lot of things on here, and quite honestly, part of this list does include the turf field, that we were just choose to go that route. All the buildings need a lot of things. We've come in the past and talked about, for example, the electrical service, the main infrastructure of electricity, electricity service at Misco Hill. This is from nineteen sixty, it has oil field transformers in a room with a lock on it that the leak goes. It works, and it's probably super great quality, but it's also six and five years old now. So some of those things are going to have to get replaced at some point. So this is just basically a preliminary list, everything we can think of that probably should be on. One of the things that, as Ken and I went through this recently, and we started to talk about Misco Hill, is that there is a push out there to potentially replace Misco Hill at some point in the near future. When that is, I don't know. The question is, do we invest a lot of money into fixing things at Misco with the idea that we're possibly going to replace it sooner rather than later? So that's something that we have to take into account as well, with people with some of these things. I've said this before, our debt service building, Buckland Memorial, and we did some stuff at Misco about ten years ago. All comes off the books to F Y twenty-four, so we've got two years left, twenty-three and twenty-four. I feel that that would be the appropriate time to go back to the towns, because we need to do this through debt exclusion. It's not, we don't have to spend the money set aside that we can finance over ten or twenty years, work through M S B A, get reimbursement for some of this stuff. Typically, you can get almost fifty percent as a reimbursement, but as you see, this list totals around thirty million dollars. It's enormous. Some of the things are actually in progress right now. And I still on that list was the mowers that we put in the budget last year that we ordered last September that we still haven't got. So clearly we will be paying for them this fiscal year, but they'll go on to next fiscal year. We funded those within the budget. There's some other things that we're going to have to do sooner rather than later. For example, we've got some staircases at this school that are just probably departed and be replaced. We have one at Memorial that's in the same kind of condition. There's a few things that we're going to have to deal with sooner. But for the most part, a lot of this stuff, I think, you're going to be looking at probably in twenty twenty-five, so. So the process will probably be to start putting together some kind of a building committee or steering committee to start to assess what we want to do. As far as replacing Misco Hill, that's a whole different ballgame. That is probably something that we are looking at. And there's processes to go through that. Keep in mind that a new little school today is generally running at $125 to $150 billion to build as opposed to a net market cost $20 billion to build. So there's a little bit of difference in price. Again, we can get reimbursement from MSBA. There's lots of things we have to look at as far as that goes. But I do strongly feel that we can't neglect the three buildings that we have just because we wanted to Misco Hill school. I think we have to somehow incorporate it all together in some fashion. I don't have a solution to that, quite honestly. Beyond that, I'm not going to hide it. Like I said, hopefully you guys have read through all this. It is a little overwhelming sometimes to see it all. There are certain things that we do need to address. Is there any?
Can I jump in?
Sure.
All right. So to, this is the preliminary list. So what I view as the next phase, we need to start prioritizing, right? And so I want this to become a public list, right? So where, you know, right now we have, we've outlined it all, but then we'll prioritize here are our top safety needs. So you have a ranking for this, these are our safety needs or these areas impact teaching learning. Here are, you know, short-term, you know, some we can address because it's, it's a lot of money. It's a short, short-term need. Some are, okay, there's, you know, we're going to need a lot more money and we don't have that in the budget. So we can prioritize that way as well in doing so. So one thing I'll get to do this summer is the facilities tour with Ken. Where we go all through all the buildings and we'll start to capture. And he did have pictures of all these, most of these as well. But I find that sometimes visuals will help to explain why in some areas do you need to move carpet even in the classroom where obviously it's not a safety issue, like, okay, we can get by another year or something. Sometimes you get to a point where you can't get by or it's really impacted teaching learning. Or it's a safety issue, you need to show that in visuals. Or take all of you on a tour, right? Once we kind of have this prioritized and you can give a sense, so you can start to kind of know things in these areas. So the great example was this, there's a crumbling stair right out here by the net month, by the place.
Yeah.
Thank you. I shouldn't talk that much. Losing my words now. But by the letter field and I've heard about it, but then, you know, oh yeah, I see it. It's like, you know, actually a different level from years ago when we did it. People can trip and get hurt on it. Or there was stuff that was broken that I saw going up to the field at Misco. So we're addressing that, but seeing it, thinking, okay, now we see, we can try to come up with solutions. So what, this is preliminary, we are going to organize it, that's going to take some time. And that, that, having that list is a buildup to whatever big MSBA proposed plans we have to have on capital list. We have to have, show our maintenance plans, which we have, we presented a little bit on here. We have to have a lot of documentation in place before we get approval anyways for any MSBA proposed projects. So just let you know that we have this, you know, short-term list. They've done a great job of it. It's ongoing, you know, they need weekly, daily, and it's like, here's the next thing added to the list. But we want to be able to put it in a presentable form for everyone to expect that it's a big goal for us. And then start to, I would say, if any of you aren't really interested in this and into this and want in, you know, we'll take more, once we start that process, more eyes and people just kind of work through this.
You know, and Ken loves to take people on tours around the buildings and take you down. Or the room, he takes you up on the roof to show you all the air conditioning units. I mean, he loves to show facilities and he knows more about these facilities than anybody I've ever met. You know, every time something goes wrong, he knows what it is. He generally knows what it needs to take to fix it. Some of the things on, on the anticipated list are going to get done sooner rather than later. For example, the water treatment system, say Buckland, Misco, Buck is already in place. Misco, we've got approval, so we should be going in soon. The staircase Marie mentioned, we're going to try to see if we can fix that over the summer. There are things that are going to happen, but there are some things that are going to get put on. I mean, you know, another example is furniture. Some of the furniture in the facility was bought in 1996, '97. And if it still holds up and it works, that's great. But a lot of it doesn't hold up to work anymore. It's beginning to fall apart, it's wearing out.
So we've had pockets where we worked with other vendors. Or there's, you know, a company that went out and donated, you know, some office chairs. And we said, we heard about it and, you know, so we're able to do that. And if we hear more about that, we don't always take, take that. So we, we're not just, you know, we're being favorable.
I mean, we replaced roofs, replaced the desk chairs and very often somebody that, you know, we paid like $10 a chair instead of the $200 a chair you would normally pay for. Things that were, as the term would be gently used, but certainly useful for us. And I think, you know, you're I've thought about it and I'd like to pursue that as well.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions about all of this? I know it's a lot of information right now that's just kind of thrown on a spreadsheet. This was the first step was to get it here so that we can see this. And I guarantee you in a month, there'll be more things on this list. And maybe a couple of things will get knocked off as well.
I think there's a cafeteria for Misco, those ethos and failings.
I think they fixed that, what you talked about, they fixed. So that kind of stuff, that's an easy fix. You know, some things we, we can get to right away. It's the big ticket things, you know, like we talked about carpets in the rooms that are, you know, 25. Like carpet in this room here was put in 1997. But it doesn't really look that bad. I don't see anybody tripping over it compared to the classrooms where there's actually rips, where there are people have been walking, you know, chairs have been moving around. So those we try to address as we can. But keep in mind, you know, a classroom carpet is around $3,000. The auditorium, if you go to the auditorium down there with carpet, it really is worn out. I'm guessing that that's probably $100,000 to $125,000 to replace that carpet. Because you've got to take all the chairs out, that, it's a lot of work. We looked at the stage floor at Misco at one point. And we do have some ideas of how to correct it, but the ideal way is to take what's there and put in a new floor. But that's very expensive to put in, you know, do floor. You know, we talked about some kind of older. We try to find any way we can do some of the stuff. In some cases, we can't really just, you know, just patch it over. Eventually you have to do something more important, more major. But we've got a staircase at Memorial for the loading dock, but we just have to block. It's just humbled apart. But we've got some issues here that wood staircase at Misco, that if you guys are familiar with Misco, there's like a wood staircase that I have no idea where it came from.
Up to the fields.
Up to the field. We're actually going to just take that out because we have two other entrances and I didn't watch.
And there's some parts not to code, and that's one that I checked out.
That was in '86 as well.
Yeah. It's been there forever and I watched a bunch of kids go up with one hand. And then I went up afterward and I just stood halfway up and just kind of, it hit us in the whole thing with like wobble. So that's just going to come out. Someday we may put another stairway, we have other ways to get to that field.
So we can prioritize it.
Correct. You know, we have to look at this and also look at potential from Misco down the road. There's a lot that's kind of really bad and it is of the facilities, you know, that is the oldest facility.
Don't forget the roof here.
And the roof here, yeah. When I was in the hands of sometime in a heavy rainstorm, watched the buckets catch the water. Or I think John Coughlin probably doesn't really know that, right?
Exactly.
He has plenty of, like, some water. The chief has at least put there.
I think what stood out to me was when I was in a social studies wing and I'd never been there after a storm. So I'd seen some of the other ones and it was, water was going all down the whole hallway. I mean, you couldn't even contain it in a stairwell. So that's, yeah. So those are the type of examples that you share and say, okay, I know a roof isn't exciting. However, you can't have water.
Because I want to order the shoes. I mean, personally, whoever thought that flat roof, simply with a good idea. I mean, I would love to just build it, like frame it out and just put a regular roof on it. I mean, the wings, at least they have shingles. But the sections that are flat just are problematique. You know, this building, in order to do the roof, you have to take off the HVAC, HVAC equipment off because it's on top of it in order to put it in the roof. And some of those units need to be replaced anyway. But again, it's, it's all one. All right.
I think, Jay, this is a great personalist. I think we used to try, it's probably some combination of maintenance versus safety versus nice to have. But then, you know, starting to understand what's a small part of matching from MSBA. And then I think, you know, this is probably something we want to, you know, early mid next year, start to get in front of the, what we call the cross committee, right, where we cut, you know, the income, other towns and just start to get people's temperature on it. And I hear about the turf field all the time as well, but I've got a couple of home pals with parents, but it's, there's big dollars against it as well. So we've got to start to understand.
And a really great presentation of updates that I think we benefit obviously that are much different people.
Right. But there's some good strategies I'm prepared to figure out, right? Can you go for a single ask or do we go for multiple little asks that, you know, we're going to get people's temperature on, right? And that might be a fair approach to look at.
Right.
You know, the communication needs to share now, communicate it throughout. If you have a lot of questions about why certain things aren't prioritized throughout, it's really helpful in understanding that. I think with that huge, like, process that, that we need to go through, that's different from an individual, needs to be communicated out. Because I think sometimes people look at these and say, like, why is, you know, this so much more expensive? And so I think clearly that information needs to be presented along with it.
Yeah. I mean, generally the process, like for a new school, it wouldn't be any different with something like this. We do have an architecture firm that we've contracted with that are considered what we call our house doctors. So they are currently working on the boiler. But we can meet with them and you come up with a schematic plan. And Kelly remembers this because she was on the building committee for Buckland Memorial. You come up with a schematic plan and you go and get funding to basically get your designs started. Then you start to work with MSBA. And the architecture firm is going to work with you a lot on that in order to find out what your reimbursement is and what they will or won't approve. Because, for example, when we did the roof and the boilers at Misco 10 years ago, we wanted to replace all the unit ventilators and all the divacs. They said, that's great, but we're not going to help you on that. Pay for that yourself. So it didn't get done, we lost about $3 million in turn just for that. But these are all things that you have to get done. So we have to decide where we want to go. So you're right, I think we probably do need to start with the next year, once we sort of prioritize this stuff and see what other things we knocked off. You know, typically at the end of the year, if we have some money that we haven't spent, we try to invest it in something that we can, you know, for example, stairs here or, you know, we, the hot, there's a hot water tank at Misco. We're going to have to replace that before this ever comes around. We've got to have hot water in our tanks now for, we just did one at Misco this year.
Okay. Nothing, nothing cheap.
No, yes, I always tell Ken, every time he comes to my office, it's $10,000.
But Jay, I think, you know, over the summer, we're going to have an opportunity to do a half day. Like, we don't need to see every crevice, but, you know.
If you go on the tour, it's a fascinating tour. I'm not sure if, well, on the roof setting, what, 48 is going to go or a picture. In order to go on the roof, there's a ladder, the nurse's office in Misco, they go straight up about 30 steps. Kind of like the submarine, if you ever did bath shipco, that's what you got to think of.
All right. Thanks, Trey. All right, sounds good. I guess next up, we're on to the school committee subcommittee updates. So the first up is the superintendent evaluation subcommittee.
Yes. Well, it's just me.
It's just you, there's nobody else.
I am the committee.
Don't let the power go to you.
Yeah, no, no. So Sean compiled all of our responses for the summary of the superintendent evaluations. So if you all indulge me and we go ahead and read through, and we have shared through the background notes, but in order to share with the public as well and read through what Sean compiled. So this summary covers the evaluation period from January 1st, 2022 to June 31st, 2022. This is a shorter evaluation year than typical. The superintendent evaluation typically consists of determining performance on a set of professional practice standards and also in a set of goals and objectives for the district. As this evaluation term is the first term for Dr. Cohen, who started in URSD. It was agreed that the school committee would focus this year on goals and objectives only and take up the professional practice standards in the next evaluation cycle. Also, it should be noted that the school committee had five evaluation years for this cycle. For the beginning of this evaluation period, Dr. Cohen conducted a self-assessment to evaluate the goals and tasks which were anticipated to be required for the district in the coming year. With the help of district administrators and school leadership, Dr. Cohen then proceeded to define goals and objectives and conduct plan development to understand what could be accomplished in the coming term. These goals and objectives were discussed and approved by the school committee. During the year, Dr. Cohen and her administration worked on implementation of these plans to achieve defined goals. And we are here today to discuss the evaluation of results of Dr. Cohen's performance of these goals and objectives during the past year. The established goals developed by Dr. Cohen and approved by the school committee consist of, one professional practice goal, which was intended to improve the first, the personal capabilities, expertise and tools which can be utilized to perform the job of superintendent of schools. One student learning goal, which is intended to improve the content for pillar methods and processes for teaching for students and in skills and staff. Two district improvement goals, which are goals intended to improve the trajectory of the district and its overall capacity to adapt to student needs, support new programs required by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and to accelerate the performance and efficiency of our school district in partnership with communities it supports. Each school committee member has separately evaluated Dr. Cohen's performance and superintendent evaluation subcommittee compiled a summary of their responses for presentation to the community today. The evaluation ratings are as follows: exceeded, met, significant progress, some progress, and did not meet expectations. Starting with goal number one, professional practice goal, superintendent skills development. The school was intended to develop skills and strategy development, data analysis, communications, board relations, budget development, equity, and instructional leadership by actively engaging in the first year of the MASAS, new superintendent induction program, as well as the AASA, aspiring superintendent's blended learning academy, and the mass mass workshops. The overall evaluation, school committee rates the progress of Dr. Cohen on this goal as met plus, with two ratings of exceeded and three ratings of met. Evaluation responses contain comments about the extensive and frankly impressive effort Dr. Cohen has put into this goal, not only to improve her own performance, but also to build a network to get advice about solving current problems and issues in our district. The summary of advice provided included followings of these ideas. There were quite a few comments about the improvement in the budget presentation for this year. It was much more comprehensive and allows us to have more detailed and productive discussions and collaboration with the towns for the future. Some quotes taken from the evaluation. In my opinion, Maureen has exceeded expectations of her achievement in this goal. Her ability to find immediate and direct application of the skills and materials she was exposed to demonstrates her commitment to and understanding of this district. Another quote, I have been completely overwhelmed by her ability to take, choose, learn, and apply it to the budget process. Finally, I think this year's budget book is one of the best we've seen for URSD. Goal number two, student learning goal, student proficiency metrics. By the end of the year, 75% of students in grade K through 8 who meet grade level expectations in ELA and MAP is measured by the eye-ready diagnostic system. The overall evaluation from the school committee rated the progress of Dr. Cohen on this goal as significant progress, with two ratings of met and three were significant progress. Evaluation responses included many comments about the significance of the 75% goal and the implications of what it means relative to the state or even to where we've been in the past, especially before COVID. It indicated we didn't feel there was a baseline to measure against. A summary of the advice provided was that there was a general appreciation for putting a system like eye-ready in place to gather metrics, which can then be used for continuous improvement in schools and hence the rating of significant progress. However, it may take more time to determine what proficiency goals like grade level expectations. Some quotes pulled from the evaluations. In my opinion, the goal is primarily to put in place a consistent measurement practice. I believe it will take much more time to establish acceptable levels of performance. We may not have established it this news yet. Another quote, I'm not sure how we really measured this, as there was not really a certain benchmark to measure progress. I believe that Dr. Cohen has completed all of the steps necessary to maximize student opportunity and achievement. Finally, I hope to see that this goal gets carried over in some way to next year in terms of in terms of applying what we've learned from the data gathered to improve instruction, particularly from middle school. Goal number three, the district strategic goal of communication. Read, by the end of the year, communication plan will be developed and implemented to improve the frequency and clarity of district communications. The overall evaluation from the school committee rates the progress of Dr. Cohen on this goal as met, with one rating of exceeded and four ratings of met. Evaluation responses, there is general acknowledgement of Dr. Cohen's excellent communication skills and her ability to provide a communication structure in which her team can present. This is very much appreciated. Summary of advice provided, the need for a communication plan is acknowledged by Dr. Cohen is apparent and very important. There is a need for process, for a process which provides consistent communication of problems, events, preparedness for families and students, et cetera, through the appropriate platform or social media channel. Some quotes pulled from the evaluators, this goal is clearly met was one. This is an area where as apparent, I have truly felt and benefited from Maureen's progress. Another quote for, for early next year, a strategy as to how the district will handle external communications. A combination of from, who, when, how often, and through which platform. Focus on how we use each platform in the best way. Another quote was consistently reading newsletters from the individual schools as well as the new district-wide updates have greatly contributed to improved communication this year. In addition, numerous updates to the district websites have made information more accessible to families. Goal number four, the district's, district's strategic goal, social emotional learning. By the end of the year, a system will be in place to help teachers to reconnect with students through established STL curriculum modules, professional development and culture, culturally responsive practices and student SEL data. The overall evaluation from the school committee rates the progress of Dr. Cohen on this goal as met with five ratings from that. The overall responses indicated there was common acknowledgement, the effort that's gone into this goal. A lot of work has been done and it should be commended. It is also understood that more needs to be done on a consistent basis in the future. Summary of the advice provided is that it will be important to establish specific goals and metrics to understanding the progress we're making and the improvements needed in SEL and culturally responsive practices as we move forward. There will be need to show and reinforce the impact of the work that has been done. Some quotes pulled from the evaluators. While I believe that Maureen's achievement at this goal laid the groundwork, I would like to see continued district-wide focus on the application of these core principles. And if you have made some great strides in this area, future goals should include continuing to identify areas of need based on assessment results as well as communicating data with families. An overall evaluation summary. Among the evaluators, there was acknowledge, there was acknowledgement of many challenges of past year and the basic blocking and tackling that was needed to establish a firm footing for the future. Notable in the comments were positive statements about the strong administration team that Dr. Cohen has put in place and advice on utilizing them to their fullest. There was also advice about not being afraid of making mistakes as it is part of continuous improvement and about continuing to be quick to react to correct problems and continuing to be honest with parents within communications. Positive highlights mentioned for this evaluation period. Improvement in the detailed reporting of the budget, improvement in measurement of student progress, establishment of new SEL D cap practices with excellent professional development rollout, depth of communications and establishment of new processes for response to inquiry, men of a leadership team, notably H. buyer, Cheryl Patrick, Dave Finn and Jenny Angelo. Though this period is a starting point, the accomplishments for this year are impressive and they serve as the basis for significant progress in the future.
What work? Alright, thank you very much. This is great.
Yeah, it was lovely to read all of the, the really nice comments.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think you were all of the feedback. I really wish you would take the time. A lot of really descriptive feedback too, which I always find to be a little boggled. Nice summer. Um, you do need to have a motion.
But I agree.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to accept the evaluation of the superintendent's outline?
I know that we vote to accept the evaluation of superintendent's outline.
Oh, there it is.
Hi.
Alright, alright. Alright, um, moving on to other matters not anticipated by the committee within forty-eight hours of the post-meeting. You wanna read this, start again?
Sure, maybe I can just have John and Mary and Steve say it.
So probably some, we have an inspiring day coming, um, as you heard. So it's next Tuesday. We had initially planned for students to go to Southwood Stu to support. They had also, um, spending data. We had done a workshop here in March, but wanted to get them out, um, onto it. But unfortunately, Southwood was not able to accommodate us, so they are looking to go over the border into Rhode Island. Rhode Island is a cataclysmic place for sports. So, um, we're just looking for approval to, um, bring a group of approximately forty students into Rhode Island.
Alright, do you have a motion to approve the out-of-state filter request for a larger moving zoo? What on? Alright, uh, moving on, correspondence. Next up is future agenda items. Discuss them. Uh, well, with that, you have a motion to adjourn? Time to open the meeting structure at eight thirty-seven P M.